Call to order, may we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Mayor Styx?
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Rule?
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the closed session February 7th meeting of the Ojai City Council. Would you please say the pledge, James?
Sure, thank you. All right, please join me in standing, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Approval of the agenda? Motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And what would the amendment be?
Yeah, the amendment would be to drop item number two from the agenda.
So that would be for the agenda to have consideration of initiation of litigation for one, not two potential cases?
That is correct. Do I need to specify which one, or are we clear?
No, that would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion on that?
It would be up to the council majority to decide whether or not to have the second closed session item. The council's aware of the nature of the two initiation of litigation items, one involving a longstanding project, the other involving more recent issues. It would be up to the council majority to decide to not hold the second closed session, and then there's two choices from there. One would be to pull it off the agenda and not hold it, period, unless it's put back on the agenda by a request of two or the mayor, or alternatively to shift it to an open session discussion at a future meeting with some parameters regarding what that would be.
May I ask another question? So we just received this statement from John Drucker, and are you in agreement with that statement?
I'm not sure what there is for me to agree to. Mr. Drucker has made a statement withdrawing the claim or right to claim to disclose the Minner memo previously asserted by Councilmember Rule. I agree that that has been withdrawn, but I'm not sure what else there is to agree with.
Okay, so I thought the concern about Councilmember Rule's presence had to do with that memo, and we were going to discuss, but that's off the table.
The issue is a unilateral withdrawal of a unilaterally asserted right can be unilaterally re-withdrawn. So my advice to the councils is that you can, the council may consider the matter in the closed session as agendized under potential initiation of litigation against Councilmember Rule if desired by the majority, because the withdrawal of the alleged right to disclose the attorney-client privilege memo could be unilaterally withdrawn in the future.
As could...
And the city could seek to enforce that via litigation. That's the question for the council. The council majority could consider further in closed session.
Okay, and just a reminder, council, if you could bring it back through the chair, any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I do have a comment. So in withdrawing asserting any right, negating the assertion of any right, I am in the same place as everyone else on this council, am I not? I know that you believe, if I understand, that the fact that I asserted it once puts me in a different category, is that correct? But I have done now what everyone here has done, which is said that I will not, because of privilege, disclose that memo. Is that correct?
So...
I mean, everyone here is in the same place, is my question to you. We all have said we will not disclose this memo because of privilege, I'm assuming.
So my advice is that only, you're the only council member who asserted a right to disclose it, and you are also the only council member who's withdrawn that asserted right. That is different than the other council members. No one else asserted a right in the first place.
Okay.
So that difference still is on the table. You've withdrawn it unilaterally, we appreciate that, but nothing stops you from flipping again. So the question for the council majority is, is there, having withdrawn your present assertion of a right to disclose the memo, they may find that that accomplishes the goal, and therefore no need for the closed session. That would be a majority choice. Alternatively, they could seek to discuss it further.
Okay.
Obviously, it's a bit handcuffed in this particular moment.
I have...
But I'd like to know where the, what we need is majority direction.
Right. I do have, this is not binding, though, clearly, this letter.
No, nothing would prevent this from being withdrawn tomorrow. That's the question before the council.
Okay. Andy, you have a question?
Yeah. Is the assertion of the right to disclose the confidential advice of the city's attorney the only issue that was noticed for, I mean, is it that narrow that we're only talking about that, or are we talking in general about...
I mean, the council can consider initiation of litigation on the full set of issues.
So there's a broader potential, yeah, if there's a broader scope of remedies that we might pursue based upon perceived violation of the Brown Act and the confidentiality provisions, then I would want to discuss what our options are in closed session.
Understood, but it's not up to me.
Why not?
Yeah.
That's just a comment.
Okay. Susan?
My comment is my first choice would be to withdraw the item and discuss it in another, you know, more open forum. My second choice would be if the council majority wants to proceed, that Councilmember Rule definitely be allowed to attend.
So...
And I also want to add to that, that we conduct these closed sessions in a more formal manner, rather than taking a casual yea or nay vote, that we make motions, that there be notes taken, and that there be a report from the city attorney as to, you know, I don't know what you can legally say, but if we make, if there is an action taken, can it be reported to the public?
We report out all actions taken that are required to be reported out by law. The council can voluntarily report out additional actions that may or may not be taken, that are not required to be reported out. The key there is the Brown Act requires certain actions to be reported out. We always report out actions required to be reported out. Other actions are not required to be reported out, but can be taken in closed session. Those we do not currently report out, but the council could direct them to be reported out, and I would advise the council strongly to discuss that action by action.
Okay.
To make sure that we're not, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot on any given action. So that can all be discussed in individual closed sessions, what to report out, if anything, what actions taken that are not reportable actions, capital A, capital R, but are desire to be reported, majority rule will control there. So that can certainly be done in the future.
Okay.
So...
Mayor may make a statement at your convenience, or Rachel?
Yeah, Rachel, if you want to say something? But you had a question. I was...
Yeah, well, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Andy, because there are other issues other than just this letter to talk about. Do you want to make a comment?
So I've had a lot of time to think about all of this, and we had our incredible academy for the new mayors and council members, and I learned a lot. And one of the things that was my takeaway in both the ethics workshop that we had, as well as the Brown Act workshop that we had, was what can be disclosed from a closed session. And in both sessions, it was a violation of the law to disclose anything, except for a few little whistleblower provisions. And so I've gone over the laws over and over and over again, and there's a procedure for revealing things, and why, the reason why, is because it's protected under attorney-client privilege. And the client in this case is all of us. And so by saying what you did, it took away our voice, and that felt, you know, like that's something that I think is in question. And at the same time, I know the repercussions for if we don't include you in our meeting, or if, you know, if we, if we, you know, if we have a closed session without you, then that makes you feel even more alienated, and that creates further division in this group, and then we're back in the same divisive position that we, that got us here in the first place. And so I have another proposal that I'd like to make, and that is that if we, that we're all getting to know each other, we're all learning, you and Councilmember Whitman and I, we all went to that academy, we all learned things, that I learned things that I didn't know before. I learned things about harassment, I learned everything, was the whole gamut was covered. And there were things that I wasn't aware of in our meeting on the 24th that now I have clarity about. And so I'd like to propose that we, that we, two things. One, I think we need an ethics committee. I think that we need, we need to somehow get on the same playing field in terms of what we understand is acceptable, and so that we can avoid a situation like this from coming again. And I'd also like to propose that we, you know, we're talking about having the workshop, kind of like a team-building workshop, and I'd like to propose that as part of that workshop, that we include some kind of restorative practice, some kind of reconciliation, because the warring factions in our community are playing out here, and I don't think it's good for Ojai to have this kind of division. And so that's what I'd like to propose.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about tonight?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we move forward or not?
Well...
Could I make a statement before we call them?
Can you answer?
Yeah. My, I don't have an absolute, this is, I want more discussion before I make a decision. But my decision is if I do, if I do vote to have, you know, an open session or to have this be a discussion, then my vote is that there's a caveat, that we can address the, you know, the breach that happened, that somehow that needs to come out, just so that, again, so that we're all on the same playing field, and so that we know moving forward that we can't, that there are repercussions for those, for actions that are, you know, sort of violating the trust of the group. So that's what I propose.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
I have a statement, too, after you.
Yeah, I have 100% agreement with both of those caveats or amendments to amendments. I did just have a statement I'd like to make, so, and like you, I learned an immense amount that I really did not understand, being a new council person, obviously, but, I mean, I have been on councils before, but not in this particular kind of environment. So I understand the second item is related to a right I did not relinquish regarding a certain privileged document, I guess we can call it what it is, the Minner memo. I did not understand how the city attorney would read that, not relinquishing the right. He read it to mean that there was an option for me to sue the city. What I didn't understand is that there was, that he was looking at it as though it were an option for him to sue me, to enjoin me from releasing that document, that privileged document. So I just want to reassure everyone point-blank, I have been on city councils, I have been on school boards, I have been highly tempted to break confidentiality, and I never have, except for this one instance. So to note, I just want to make absolutely positively clear, I don't, haven't, won't, didn't, mightn't, couldn't, shouldn't, and absolutely will not release a privileged document under the Brown Act. I will sign an affidavit, I mean, this is just a statement, but this was based on a conversation that I had with both James and Matt today. I will sign an affidavit that is legally binding, if that will reassure people. I have no intention and never did have any intention of releasing the Minner document. So, you know, I will take this, if this council votes, to amend and to let go of item two, I will take that as an incredible sign of goodwill, and I will reciprocate that incredible sign of goodwill. You know, and then finally, enough, you know, the item in question, just on a pragmatic level, would waste resources to no purpose. There is no intent to release the Minner document. The issue in question has been resolved, in my mind, in that, however you need it to legally be said, legally be signed, legally be whatever, I will not release the Minner document, and I will reiterate that I never intended to. But I understand, after having talked to Matt, how he interpreted what was in my letter. Okay, so, fine. And the other thing that was really interesting, he's made clear that, you know, this was something else I think we learned, that he takes direction from the council. So regardless of what James thinks, and regardless of what Matt thinks, he takes direction from us. It is our vote, and I think that that's really important to remember, because I have myself wondered, like, where is the parent here? You know, well, the parent is this council right here, and it's really important to kind of remember that. We are the parent. I am really anxious to move forward with more activities for the kids, to do the things that we were elected to do. Safer walking and biking options are very important in my particular district, greener spaces. The point being that we have a lot of work to do, and the more, and I feel this deeply, the more we get involved and enmeshed in, you know, legal entanglements, that's what we're going to be spending our time doing, as we are right now. So I guess that is my statement. Yes, I have, you know, I've been to the Gold, the Transit Meeting, the Water District Meeting, numerous council meetings, the Green Coalition, you know, I've met with more stakeholders than I can name. It's time to move forward. It's time to take all of the stuff that we have gathered and move forward. So that's my final, that's my statement on this, and as I said, I will reiterate, I will take this as a sign of goodwill, and I will reciprocate that goodwill. I will work towards making this a workable, productive body, and that's what I hope we can do.
Susan?
Yeah, so, okay, that leaves me with two questions. If, I still don't know how the council majority, if the council majority has other issues that they wish to discuss under the second item, as Councilmember Whitman stated, and if, depending on which direction we go, I have questions. I have my, and these are questions that I can let go of, if we let go of the item, but my question is, who gave Matt direction to put item number two on the agenda with the instruction not to make, to leave Councilmember Rule, she was not on that email? Was that a mistake, or were you instructed not to include her? What was the thinking behind that?
That's a topic we'll discuss in closed session if need be.
Okay, okay, can...
But the short, that's a topic we'll discuss in closed session if need be. The short answer, though, is that the mayor and I put the agenda together.
Okay, and so can we decide right now whether, if, okay, so my question is, I don't, I won't know how to vote until I know how the council, the rest of the council feels about including Councilmember Rule in any discussion if we go forward with two. Like I said, I'd rather drop two, address it another time, address, maybe there's portions of your concerns that we can discuss in open session, Councilmember Whitman, so...
You want me to answer?
Well, I need to know how, I think it's maybe time for the mayor to speak. I don't know how, I don't know how you three feel yet about including Councilmember Rule if we proceed with two.
Well, I'll state, I'll try to be pretty quick about this, but the threat to release the attorney's memo giving us advice about how to protect the city of Ojai is not the only issue that has occurred. In fact, Councilmember Rule said that, you know, she would defer to us, but when she asked for permission to address the details of our closed session, not one of us seconded that request, and she proceeded then to make our council session a three-ring circus. And she broke the law by disclosing the information she disclosed. If she disagreed with us about how our comments at closed session should be treated under the Brown Act, then her sole remedy was to notify the city that we had a Brown Act violation. And then it would be Matt's responsibility to evaluate whether there was and to potentially cure the Brown Act violation. There are no legal provisions that allow Councilmember Rule or the attorney for Anson Williams to come in and start disclosing to our entire city what happened in closed session. And I haven't heard you address that at all, besides the fact that many of the statements that are made in that missive by your attorney are false, and verifiably, and I will establish that they are false.
I'm looking to heal here.
And they were made maliciously.
No, they weren't.
So if you want to withdraw...
No cross-talk, please, thank you.
If you want to withdraw everything that you've said, if you want to withdraw your accusation of crimes to certain members of our council, then I might start to listen to you, but otherwise, I want to talk to the city attorney tonight about your accusation of crimes, you're breaking the law.
Okay.
Your attorney advising you to break the law.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's where we are.
And just to confirm, so the breaking of the oath of not to reveal what happens in closed sessions is against the law?
Yes, unpermitted disclosure of closed session information does violate the law.
Okay, thank you.
If you had brought in an attorney who was an expert in public meeting law in California, I realize you've gone to public meetings in other states, but if you had brought in an attorney who can actually claim some area of expertise other than his support for Anson Williams, then someone might have, someone might have respect for that.
Excuse me, that's out of order.
Hey, I'm asking for decorum, and could you please bring it through the chair? Councilmember Whitman is finished talking? Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, and I would like, I have one more question. In terms of the legality, you know, I think that is my question, you know, if the law was broken, then, and also in terms of the path, the legal path, if a council member has an issue with something that happens, that is clear. The legal path was communicated to Councilmember Rule, correct?
There are several paths which were not discussed before the meeting on the 24th, because I was given no notice of the concerns, but the paths have been, are available, there are confidential communications with the district attorney, request for a cure and correction, there's a standard process in the Brown Act for a demand letter asserting a violation of the Brown Act in a cure and correct process, or a conversation with any pair of council members, or myself, all of those paths exist, none were utilized in this case.
Okay.
The council can consider options and remedies regarding those closed session disclosures in, those closed session disclosures in closed session if desired. We would look for a majority vote.
Okay, my concern is the breaking of the law.
Okay, I have, I have a comment.
I have a comment, too.
Rachel, and then Susan, and then Leslie?
I had my hand up a long time ago.
Go ahead, Susan. Yes, Susan's next.
I have to say this, Councilmember Whitman, it's clear to me that your interest is not in goodwill. Your comments alone are divisive. You twice mentioned Anson Williams. He has absolutely nothing to do with the discussion that's taking place here. That's, you know, you're creating divisiveness with your words, more divisiveness, okay? Our interests, I believe Rachel, myself, and I think our, I hope, our mayor and Councilmember Rule, we want to work, and we discussed this on the phone, that we want to work together and get past this, not add more fire to the, more fuel to the fire, okay? So let us be careful what we say at this moment, and not pull in some past grievances long before this occurred. I implore you to reconsider, you know, so that, so that we can move past this and work together again, you know? The mayor and I, the first year we had a very, very good relationship, and when you called me, I was so happy that you called, you know, I immediately let go of everything. And I took it as an apology, whether you intended it that way or not, you know, and so I was really happy to, you know, that gave me hope that we could work together and get past all this. So can we please agree that if we're not going, if we have things to air out, and I don't know if today is even the right day for item two...
Susan, you then went to the paper.
Can we wait, can we finish in that, one at a time? So it's Susan, and then Rachel, okay, and then Leslie, and then Andy?
Yeah. As to my process after what was disclosed in closed session, the next day, I called the city manager. I attempted to find out what the process was. The city manager called the city attorney. I asked the city attorney what my remedies were. What I heard from you, and maybe I was wrong, I said, how can I disclose this, and you said, you can't. And I said to you, that's not what I want to hear.
I also noted to you respectfully that there were options regarding majority vote.
No, I...
You asked, how can I unilaterally disclose that information?
No, no, excuse me, I did not, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that may have been the case. You know, maybe you thought I was asking unilaterally, but I did not hear from you. The only thing I heard from you was, I could take it to the district attorney. I did not hear, and you, honestly, you said that, and you told me, you know, the name of the district attorney or the department that I would go to. I did not hear from you that I could bring it back to the council. Now, I'm not saying that you didn't say that. We were on a half an hour call, I had a hard stop, and you guys were late calling in. So we didn't have the time to really talk through this issue. All I heard was, you can't, and I did not believe that. And so I went not just to one attorney, you know, I didn't just go to one attorney. I went to three attorneys, all who told me that indeed I could. So I'm just saying, I don't want to argue about it, I'm just saying that in my mind, I tried to follow the obvious and correct path, which was first to James and then to both of you. That was my path, and I told you I was going to go and get a second opinion, because I didn't, you know, the law is, it's, you know, that's why you have lawsuits, because it's mutable. You say this, and the other lawyer says that. And to me, I needed to get a second, third, and fourth opinion, and I told you at that time that I was going to do that. I told you I couldn't live with, you can't do this, and that I was going to go get, I was going to go get other opinions. So just to think that I willy-nilly blew everything off and decided I was going to shoot it out to the world is a mischaracterization, and I'm not saying that you did it, but I'm, that you're mischaracterizing me, I'm just saying that that sort of, that was not... I'm just saying that that sort of, that was not what I did. That was not what I did. I, to me, I followed the correct procedure, and I did not, as you often don't with lawyers, get an answer that I thought was reasonable. Now, I was a new, I was a new councilperson? That's very true. So just so, it's really important that you understand, I just didn't willy-nilly go out there and say, "I'm going to tell the world all about this." No, I checked it. I checked it. So we can get into that discussion, right? And that's fine, but that puts us back into, you know, a legal morass. We don't move forward doing anything that we need to do. We're in, we're, we're back where we started. And do I believe I was on firm legal ground? I absolutely do. So if this is how the council decides that we move forward and we get into a legal morass and we don't do the job that we were elected to do, then so be it. But I think, to Rachel's point, we need to move forward in a way that honors the people that elected us, not this kind of back and forth, back and forth. Rachel?
Yeah. You know, one thing I'm aware of is how through this, through your actions, two members of our council have been put under a lot of investigation and also have been accused of crimes. And, and a lot of what was said came out publicly in a way that none of us had control over. And, and, you know, there's one, transparency is one thing, I'm a big believer in transparency, you know this, I'm a huge believer that, you know, I studied ethics in grad school. So there's a difference between, there's a difference between bringing truth into light and, and doing harm to people. And so, and so I'm going to go back to what I said earlier, and that is that, you know, I would imagine, and I don't know this, I haven't spoken to them, but I would imagine that the, that the members of this council who have been harmed, you know, emotionally and professionally harmed through this, I would imagine that they would want to know what kind of actions that they can take or what kind of recourse there is. And at the same time, that feels really punitive. It feels like, oh, Leslie's bad, and, you know, it, there, it feels to me like, like what I said before, like this is stuff that needs to come out in a restorative practice in a, in a, in a, in an open, in an open way that, that can bring up the ethical issues and also bring up the, you know, the, the real logistical issues of how are we going to work together in the future?
Thank you. And I would completely agree with you, Rachel. It's all about collaboration. We all, the five of us need to be able to work together, because we have a lot to do. There's a lot to do in the city. My concern is the breaking of the oath, the breaking of the law, the breach. And I think it's important for us to talk about. I just, you know, and that's why it's on the agenda. And so, are we ready for a roll call?
Well, we have, have you, the way I vote will depend on if Councilmember Rule is part of that discussion.
Well, there's a, there's a, Councilmember Rule made a motion to take it off the agenda, correct?
I did, thank you.
Okay, and you seconded it. So we will vote on that first, right?
Unless somebody makes a substitute motion, we've got a motion on the table.
Okay, all right.
I'll make that substitute motion that we vote, if we do have it, to have Councilmember Rule with us.
I'll second.
Any further comments on that?
So as I understand it, the substitute motion would be a motion to retain-
Microphone.
Sorry. As I understand it, the substitute motion is a motion to retain the agenda as proposed with the two items in closed session, but to allow Councilmember Rule to participate in the discussion, waiving the necessary, making that possible. That is in order.
I think, well, I had understood maybe slightly different, so I guess this is a question.
Oh, that's clarified.
Because I think I had understood that the decision on whether or not to keep it on isn't being made yet, it's if it is on, that it would be to, the motion is to allow Councilmember Rule to participate. So I think I heard it as two separate decisions.
Your most, your, the secondary motion needs to be voted on first, and that's been seconded, so we should vote on that now?
So the motion- You clarify, what exactly are you proposing, Councilmember Lang?
My proposal was that if we vote to keep it on the agenda, that Councilmember Rule will be present in that, in that, in that-
Got you. So to vote first on the question of participation or not, and then second to vote separately whether to have the item or not.
Hmm.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Can you restate that one more time?
Yes.
So-
The vote would be, if the item is retained on the agenda, it would be all five councilmembers. Yay or nay, majority will control. And then second would be a vote on whether to retain the item on the agenda or not. Is that what's being proposed?
Yeah, and I, I'd just like clarification from council. What, what would be the reason, would there be a legal reason for not having Councilmember Rule present as we discuss your advice about what our options are, given that, you know, what's transpired?
The majority could certainly want advice as to how to take actions against Councilmember Rule independent of her presence. The majority could also want advice regarding how to take action against her with her present. We will look for majority direction.
Yeah, and I, I have, I have a concern, because at this point, I don't understand that Councilman Rule has an understanding or a commitment that our session would be confidential.
Can I speak to that, Mayor? All I can do is tell you that it will be confidential, and I will say that it was a vote of this council to keep me out in the first place. So if the council would like to rescind that vote and vote to put me in, given the new sort of understanding and the month of whatever it has been, then the council is free to do that. So it was the vote of the council to keep me out. The vote of the council can be to put me in. So that would be my statement on that. It's not that it was de facto that I wasn't allowed, it was the vote of this council that did that.
But I, I didn't vote for that.
You abstained.
Because I didn't understand, I could not understand at, in that moment, I did not have enough legal background to understand why she would have to, you know, so I, I wasn't comfortable to vote for her to not be there. But I also didn't understand there was some legal reason.
I, and the legal reason, can you reiterate that, please?
The legal reason is the council would be considering initiation of litigation against Councilmember Rule. And that puts Councilmember Rule adverse to the city.
Yeah, and that's off the table now.
And that's potentially also a conflict of interest on her part.
Correct.
Rachel?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So we have a motion to keep it on the agenda and to include all five of us currently, and that was-
I'm going to make a counter-proposal.
Okay.
I think if there's no reason that we have to do this tonight-
Not legally that we're aware of. Obviously, the interest or-
Yeah.
Public interest, of course.
That, given that there's a lot of, you know, this, this is a, this is a new development as of tonight, so let's, I propose that we defer the closed session to a later date, and you can propose one for us, and that in the meantime, we can discuss whether Councilmember Rule will be present or not.
I would ask that the vote be taken.
Please move across top.
I would, I would-
Okay, could you finish, could you finish your sentence? I couldn't hear, Andy.
Yeah. That's, my, my proposal is that we continue this to a date to be determined. If we need the exact date tonight, that's fine, if not, otherwise. In the meantime, we can discuss whether Councilmember Rule should be present at that time.
Okay, so that's a motion, just a second. That's a motion, is there a second for that motion?
I'd like to amend that motion. I would like to amend that-
Is there a second for it, to start?
Oh, I don't know.
I'll second that.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion that we actually take this vote tonight, that we move forward, like we said, you know, like is the prudent thing to do. And so I am making a motion that we, I don't know, whatever you guys want to do. I mean, you know, you can, we can make a motion that we will continue, yeah, that we will continue, that we will make a motion and that, all right, I'm going to make a motion that we, I'm back to the original motion. I'm going to make a motion that we decide this now and that we remove item two from the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, so which you already did at the beginning. So we have three, three motions on the floor.
I have a question, I didn't understand what Councilmember Whitman was proposing. Are you proposing that we discuss whether Councilmember Rule can be present in an open session? How are you proposing that we discuss this? I mean, that wasn't clear to me. Was it clear to everyone else?
I understood Councilmember Whitman's motion to continue item, the second item to a future date and use intervening time for one-on-one conversations-
Yes.
-without violating the Brown Act, so pick a pair regarding how, whether or not, whether the issue of Councilmember Rule's participation, which would then be decided upon at that future date.
Okay, so we have three motions on the floor. We will vote on Councilmember Whitman's first, correct?
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? It, it sounds like your motion to take this off the agenda and your motion to postpone the agenda are similar, is that, is that, oh, your motion is to completely take it off altogether?
My motion is the same motion it was the first, that we move forward, that we take it off the agenda. That was my motion.
Okay.
And that's the motion that's still on the table, is the main motion. That's the motion. There was a, second motion was the substitute motion by Councilmember Lang, if the matter is held, allow Councilmember Rule to participate. And then there was the third motion to defer it to a sec, to a future date and decide then whether or not to allow Councilmember Rule to participate. The net effect of the main motion and the third motion is the same, the item is not had tonight, what happens next is different.
Mm-hmm.
Under Councilmember Rule's main motion, it would not be had, period, unless otherwise put on the agenda through the agenda procedures in the future. Under Councilmember Whitman's motion, it would be had, it just continued to a date.
Okay, thank you. All right, so-
Can we clarify? If, if I voted for Councilmember Rule's motion, that does not negate a future discussion on these issues?
It would have to be added to the agenda through the agenda procedures, which means the mayor or two.
Yes, and we-
But it would not automatically be on the agenda. It would have been pulled from the agenda.
So there's, there's nothing that prohibits either an, an open discussion on these topics?
Correct. It would still be on the table for the future.
Okay.
But it has to be added to the agenda affirmatively.
Yes, yes, I understand. Thank you.
Rachel?
Yes, I want to also clarify that Council, Councilmember Whitman's motion would also include perhaps the addition of an open session, of us talking in an open session?
I think that's always an option after we have closed session, to decide to convene an open session to discuss whatever we're going to do.
So it sounds like these motions are the same.
Well, they're, they're different as Matt-
They're very different.
Okay, hey, I'm going to ask Councilmember Rule, could you please wait your turn?
I can definitely, definitely do that. Thank you, Mayor.
So we have two motions. As Matt clarified, they're slightly different, and so we're going to vote on the third motion first, right?
Excuse, can I make a point here? That Councilmember Whitman's motion is to go into closed session and then decide if we want to come into open session. Closed session, I'm assuming, not including me. Is that correct?
My motion doesn't include open session. It, that would be something that we would decide in closed session. And my motion leaves open the question of whether you will be invited to attend closed session based upon advice of council that each of us may end up getting as to what the, you know, pros and cons of having you present are, from a legal perspective.
Okay, okay. All right, we have a motion, and a second, on favor?
Wait a minute, we're going to do a roll call?
Yeah, we'll need a roll call on these.
What's the motion?
We're, we're voting on Councilmember Whitman's motion. We've now spent 45 minutes, we're going to spend another two, three, four hours, when we have so much on our plate. I'm going to, I'll wait my turn.
Roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, on the third motion. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
No.
Mayor Protem Francina?
No.
Councilmember Lang?
We've all been in new shoes.
Please, no talking.
I'm sorry.
You can abstain.
Please, no talking.
You can take a break.
Please, no talking.
Yeah, what, what is there? Take a recess?
A five-minute recess.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
No, no, I don't, I don't think I need a recess. I, I just have a really hard time voting.
At this point, I mean, in terms of voting, you have to say yes or no. There's no more deliberation.
You can abstain.
Okay, I'm going to abstain.
Abstain means no, no action taken.
Okay, so it's a tie vote?
So motion fails.
Okay.
We need three affirmative votes to do anything.
Okay.
So then we go to this, to the next motion, unless somebody has an alternative motion.
Okay, and the second motion is Councilmember Rule's motion?
No, the, the middle motion was Councilmember Lang's motion-
I mean, Lang's, I'm sorry.
Unless it was drawn. Because I understand that motion, it would be to allow Councilmember Rule to participate. And did it include doing it tonight or deciding separately which night?
It was if we have, if we, if we keep the, the item on the agenda tonight, then Councilmember Rule is a part of it.
Okay, so then that'd be a vote to allow Councilmember Rule to participate in the item, yay or nay, will control, and then a second vote, assuming that passes, regarding whether or not to hold the item at all, which would be the underlying main motion is made by Councilmember Rule to not have the item. And then that'll, the inverse of that'll result in what happens.
Yeah.
May I amend your motion? It's, we've now spent almost an hour on this, and we have so much to do on the ATP. Would you consider amending your motion to another, another time?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay.
I will consider amending my motion to another time.
And including Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, on the substitute motion. Councilmember Rule? Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
No.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
No.
Okay, so that passed, so we will move on. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to public comment. We'll begin with Larry Steingold, then Robin Gerber, and then Barbara Bowman. Can we have some decorum, please, here?
Yes, sorry, I apologize. But how dare you talk to them like that? They deserve as much respect as you want. You want them to talk to you like that?
Point of order, is this-
Sorry.
What's on the, this is not what's on the agenda.
No, it's public committee.
Yeah, a public comment is on items on the agenda.
Oh.
And the agenda has just been modified to delete the closed session regarding Councilmember Rule's allegations.
Right, so-
So the council could choose to not take public comment on those discussions.
If you don't want to, that's okay.
I would vote for that. I'm not taking public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Great, okay.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Are we voting, are we voting on that? I, I'm not voting for that.
Any decision made by the mayor can be overruled by, through an appeal of the chair.
I, I would appeal that.
I, I, I second that appeal. People have been waiting to comment-
For an hour.
And we might as well, you know.
And I apologize for the lack of decorum, because it's very frustrating watching a nice community where people actually care to show up and participate, all of you. It takes a lot of effort to be in city council, and it's very frustrating to watch. This didn't have to happen. You could have voted six weeks ago to have the referendum. Then we would have been moving on to affordable housing, pension reform, police protection on weekends, a road program that actually works, where the roads get done every year automatically. It's not difficult. There's only 8,000 people here. This is not difficult. Thank you. And again, I really apologize, because I sincerely care about where I live, and we live here.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next we have Robin Gerber, then Barbara Bowman, and then William Wyrick.
Hi, Robin Gerber, Terminus Lane. Um, well, I, I did have comments written about the Brown Act, but I don't actually think I'm gonna talk about that, because I have a spiritual program, and it says, just do the next right thing. And I do hear some members in this room wanting to do the next right thing. And I hear two members, Madam Mayor, I'm afraid you're included, and I'm surprised. I'm surprised, because I know you as well, and Councilman Whitman, who are holding on to resentment so tightly, who are full of such anger, and I get it, I get it, that things were disclosed that you don't like, that were improprieties, that should not have been confidential, so I would agree with Councilwoman Rule that she had a right to make them public. But to hold on to those resentments while it may feel good to you, and you may be angry, work it out somewhere else, please, rather than in our city council. We need you, Madam Mayor, to pull this group together, not to pull it apart. Putting this on the agenda, I am shocked, absolutely shocked, that you would put this on the agenda and that you are so determined, have such an appetite to punish Councilwoman Rule, who as far as I can see, has the most laudable instincts and interests, even if she may or may not have executed them properly. Let's move away, as Councilwoman Lang says, thank you, thank you for clearly being who you are and saying what needs to be said to this council, and you and Councilwoman Francina, while you may be decades apart, have incredible connection around what is Ojai, love and kindness and support and being nice, being nice, Ojai nice. And Mayor, I have heard you talk that way and be that way, and I hope you can find your way back to it again. And Councilman Whitman, I don't know you very well, but I am as shocked and upset as everyone else, and I get it, that you feel embarrassed and angry and all those things because of, of your words being made public. You need to figure out how to let that go. I don't know what it'll take for you, but that's what you have to do, because every one of you represents people. You don't represent yourself, you represent people, and you cannot be disenfranchised, any one of you. You raise your hand if you're gonna walk out of this room because the other members tell you you don't belong here. Say what you're gonna do, Mr. Whitman? I don't think so, and you should not. You were voted on, you were elected, you cannot be fired except by the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next we have Barbara Bowman, then William Wyrick.
Well, tonight was very interesting to observe, and it was actually pretty shocking. And it's sho, the whole thing that's been going on, I have been here longer than everybody. And this town has disintegrated into what looks like dirty backroom politics. And the fact that somebody wanted to bring that to light and got their hands slapped and told that they could be sued, and they were wrong, I find outrageous. And the fact that we are living with a mayor now who works with a group called Simply Ojai, who could cause this city to be sued and go bankrupt and still support it. No, I'm sorry.
Out of order, excuse me.
This is public comment, and it's not against the law for me to make my comments. It is not.
But it has to pertain to what's on the agenda.
And it is pertaining, is pertaining to the litigation.
Could you, could you let our city attorney speak, please?
Yes, that's correct. The public comment at a special meeting such as tonight is on the items on the agenda.
Litigation.
With the action taken earlier, the only item on the agenda is consideration of initiation of litigation, not regarding Councilmember Rule's allegations. So the council could rule the speaker out of order.
Okay, any-
I, I think she should finish her comments. It's on the minds of a lot of people.
Yes, absolutely. And I think the fact that we are-
Are we gonna vote on that?
Uh, well, it looks like we got three. Uh, Rachel?
Cause you're, you're speaking, uh, you're speaking about item number two on the agenda?
I'm speaking about the item that was here on the thing, that's the, uh, legal initiation of litigation.
Well, that, that is, has to do with Councilmember Rule.
Okay, then I'm speaking about, actually, I'm speaking about the whole council, the fact that the way the city's being run.
Well, yeah, but, uh, it has to pertain to what's on the agenda.
It does pertain. It pertains to the fact how you rule and how you run these council meetings are affecting the entire city. We have anger out there, we have people upset with it because of the way you're running this, the way it's being run, like for special groups, the way things are being stopped in the city because a small group of people don't work, and behind the scenes, all this stuff is going on, and it is-
I have to say, point of order, this doesn't pertain to what's on the agenda.
It pertains to exactly what went on tonight, exactly what went on. The fact that this, that this woman could possibly be censored for saying what was going on, that is what's going on. I'm sorry, I am a citizen, I have feelings, I come to these meetings, I participate, I listen to all of you. It is very important what you do, and it's important that we trust you, and it's important that we don't think you have the interests of one small group of people, and that you're angry about something and you're taking it out on someone else. That is so unbelievably important. I've been in Ojai longer than you have, and I will tell you, we've never had this kind of problem, ever. And that's what I'm here to voice. And it's up to you guys to get together and work together, and for you to let this go, and you to not just back small groups of people and work together in the better good. That's it. You can, I'm through, Betsy, that's enough. You don't have to censor me like you did her. It's enough. I've said what's the truth.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, William Wyrick?
I'm only here tonight, um, council members, because I was saddened to see the Ojai Valley News posting of the, um, response to Kimberly River's request for information about contract, who voted for the contract and the, uh, and the-
Excuse, is, how does this pertain to the agenda tonight?
I'm making a public comment on actions of council.
On, on which item?
Chair Stix, I'd be very short, if you'll let me continue, please.
Well, uh, public comment-
You have a pattern now of not letting people speak. I'm simply making a constructive suggestion.
I'm just-
And I would like to be allowed to make my constructive suggestion.
Yeah, so I'm concerned with good governance and that, do we have, in this, uh, could I please finish my sentence and, um-
I'm, I'm referring to something in the press, reg, regarding something where the, uh, city is declining on the basis of, uh, Brown Act privilege, and that is something that I think is relevant to discuss. I'd be done by now, if you'd let me-
So this is the second item you're talking about?
May I continue, please?
I just want a clarification, is this the second item you're talking about?
I'm making a public comment.
Well, I'm, I'm just, from what I know- Mayor? Let me finish my sentence. Yeah, please, thank you. Public comment needs to be on items on the agenda, correct?
At a special meeting, public comment is limited to items on the, thank you. I consider it generally applicable, and I'd like to make my constructive suggestion.
Can you finish, Matt? I couldn't hear you.
At a special meeting, public comment is limited to items on the agenda.
Okay.
So the mayor-
This is relative to the Brown Act issues in general, constructive suggestion. I'd like to make my comment and be done. It seems we have a pattern here of trying to shut down people at the podium, making public comment, and it's not a good pattern.
Oh, no, absolutely not. I just want to stick to the agenda, so-
Point of order?
Could I finish my sentence?
Point of order?
So, council members, would you like to-
Stick to the agenda.
Stick to the agenda?
Stick to the agenda.
So we have three, we have-
He would have been finished, he would have been finished three minutes ago.
Well, we have three council members who want to stick to the agenda.
Uh, well, I will just make a comment on this, if I could, thank you, if I could. We often, when people come and wait an hour, we often let them speak as a matter of principle, because they came down here and they waited an hour to speak. This is an abnormal ruling. Normally, we let people speak if they've been waiting for an hour, so I would make a motion to let those who have come and waited an hour to speak, to speak. They have three minutes, and we can do that. We are the council, takes three people to make the decision, correct, Matt?
And just to clarify, at, at a regular city council meeting, there's open public comment, and it can be on any subject, and then during a special meeting, it's only to be on the items on the agenda, correct?
I understand that. I'm saying we make exceptions.
That is correct.
We make exceptions all the time.
The council could decide by majority vote to allow Mr. Wyrick to speak on the, his broader points.
Okay.
May I point out that we had an item two. We removed it off the agenda 45 minutes into the meeting. I feel the public that was here to speak on that item still has a right to speak.
But this isn't even item two.
No. Um, okay, so how, how do we know?
I believe his comments relate to item two, they're, they're Brown Act comments.
It, it's not related to item two.
I, I would like to take a vote on whether or not we allow, uh, Mr. Warwick Wyrick to speak or not. I think-
Our former council member who served eight years.
All, all in favor of letting him-
Eight years, he sat here.
He was speaking on the Brown Act, I feel like that was part of number two.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Bill.
My point is that, um, the majority of this council is in charge of the public perception, the face of this government, the city government, to the city, the voters, frankly, the valley and the county as a whole. I'm surprised how many comments I've been getting are spreading. And so when a request was made for basic information by the Ojai Valley News on things that are, you know, a contract, how much money was spent on a contract, what the vote was on a contract, and the Brown Act is used as a reason to decline to provide that information, it's not a good look. I think it's not a good way of, of, uh, embracing the responsibility that the majority of the council has for the reputation of the city government, and as Mr. Summers said, may require, doesn't mean always have to require. And for certain things like this, uh, it's not a good look when the newspaper makes a require, uh, asks for something on, in terms of a contract and how you have voted to spend taxpayer dollars, and the Brown Act is used as a rationale for declining to reveal, uh, that, that vote and that, uh, decision about spending taxpayer dollars. Ask you to consider that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Weston, any public comment on Zoom?
No raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, we will, uh, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report out for our closed session?
With that, as the agenda is approved, as modified, we will recess into closed session and consider one item, legal council conference regarding initiation of litigation for one potential case. No reportable action is expected.